Thank you.
All right, it is five o'clock. We need to call a five o'clock meeting to order. First order of business is an executive session. Personal matter, discussion of matter related to employment and compensation of employees within county administration pursuant to sovereign code of laws, section 30 dash four dash 70 A1. We are going to move down, I think we're going to do executive session down here in our conference room so we don't displace anyone, and we will make it as quickly as possible.
Need a vote.
You're right. Do I have a motion? Oh, she got a motion by Mr. Fuller, seconded by Councilman Sees. All in favor?
Yeah.
It is unanimous. We are going to executive session. Be back shortly.
It's six o'clock and time to get our meeting started. First of all, we need to, do I have a motion that we come out of executive session? Motion by Mr. Fulmer, second by Mr. Reader. All in favor coming out of executive session? Is unanimous. All right, at this time, I'd like to call the six o'clock meeting to order.
Can you adjourn the work session first?
Okay. All right, we are adjourned out of the work session. Huh?
First and a second.
You gotta have a motion.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, I thought that was what we did. A second by Mr. Reader, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, we are adjourned. Now we'll call the six o'clock meeting to order. And we will do so by having the Honorable Councilman Reader do the invocation and pledge for us.
Let us pray. Your heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. Thank you for waking us up this morning and starting us on our way. As we continue to worship you and we continue to bless you for all the things that you have done, now give us mercy that we may have a great meeting tonight. These things we ask in your holy name, amen.
The present ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America and the two republics for what you stand for, one nation, under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all. All right, first of all, it is an honor to have you all here. It's a little intimidating for me, but it's an honor. It's great to see everybody interested in county business. First item is the adoption of the consent agenda. If that's okay, we're gonna take both items as one. First item is Newberry County Council Work Session on February 5th, 2025, and then Newberry County Council Meeting, February 5th, 2025. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Fulmer. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Is Mr. Johnson online?
That's what we were just talking about, 'cause I just got a call from him, so we're trying to get him connected.
Okay.
He's not currently.
Let me know when he gets on, please. Let me back up just a little bit. If you want to speak, please see Andrew to sign up to speak now.
I'm Andrew.
Yeah. If you haven't already signed up to speak and wish to, please see him at this time. All right. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept?
Sure, maybe.
Motion by Mr. Fulmer, second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Third item is recognitions, which is the favorite time of our day, and we're gonna turn that over to our Administrator, Mr. Scheck.
Thank you Chairman Shealy, good evening everyone. We don't often get to do this per pack house, so I'm glad to have y'all here for these recognitions, which like Chairman Shealy mentioned, are I think our favorite part of the meeting. We've got almost 200 employees at the county, and when they hit a milestone of a fifth anniversary, we do them increments of five years, we recognize them for their unit of service, which is a really good opportunity to spotlight them and what they do for Newberry County, what they do for you. Our first is a 10-year recognition, is Mr. Katrina Bognike with Animal Services, and we got a pack house. It's Katrina here. She may have had a conflict. Let me tell you a little bit about Katrina, and one thing I will say is, we're a little shorthanded right now in animal control, there's a couple of circumstances there related to health, but we've got employees that are rotating calls, they're taking call about every other week, and when you're on call in animal control, not only do you respond to calls that come at night, you know, your workday, you have calls that come in at night, you have calls that come in on the weekend, but you also have to feed and water the animals. That has to be done. So you know you're gonna be going in at least Saturday and Sunday when you're on call, so she may be attentive to that. But Katrina joined us 10 years ago, she came in as a part-time kennel attendant in 2015, and then two years after that, she was promoted into a full-time position of our adoption coordinator. And so what the adoption coordinator does is, it tries to place animals that we have in our care, either with, well, with residents and individuals, and then works with rescue organizations as well. And, you know, when you kind of think about pets, I don't know how many of y'all here in the audience have them, we have miniature dogs, and then she's part of our family. You know, so when we're talking about adoptions of pets, we're talking about really family members, and they bring joy to the family they're adopted into, and then they give that pet a second chance. And so what Katrina does for us is very important as an organization in this county too. And if y'all wouldn't mind joining me and giving her a round of applause. We appreciate all that they do there. Our second recognition is Mr. Dickard Lomadet, I know he's here, 'cause I sent him, and he's gonna join us. He has 15 years of service for the county. Thank you for being here. Lieutenant Lomadet, like I mentioned, has 15 years of service. He came to work for us back in 2010. Now that's after he had already spent, was it about a year and a half with Department of Corrections? Where he started is a 19-year-old, so he's been in corrections since he was 19-years-old. He's a native of Newberry County, went through, he's from Whitlock, went through public schools there, and it didn't take long for Dickard to ascend to a leadership position at the detention center. He was on night shift and then moved into the night shift sergeant, and you know, that was largely based on the respect that he was able to garner and build with his peers and then layer those that he supervised. From there, he moved into his current position, which is second command and lieutenant at the detention center. He's also in charge of security. He's on the statewide training council for correctional officers, and has also obtained certifications, and he's just got committed to his career. We've got a major project out there right now, you know, we've got a capital project sales tax, this is the fifth iteration in Newberry County, and quite frankly, I don't know where this county would be if we didn't have that sales tax, because it's built several very critical facilities, and one of the projects, in fact, is the project with the largest valid amount or budget, is a new dormitory at the detention center, and Dickard's heavily involved with the design of that facility and the location of it. He basically, we're having to shoehorn this building onto an existing site, which is a challenge, and he's playing an important role with that. And so we just appreciate everything that he does, and all he does for y'all, for us, for the safety of our inmates, and it's a pleasure on county council to congratulate for 15 years. Got a little change in. Thank you. Appreciate it, man. Good. All right, we've got four more recognition. You can join us. It's not often that we get to recognize an employee. I've never shook your hand. We usually hook. It's not often that we get an opportunity to recognize an employee for 50 years of service, let alone a member of our management team, so this is quite an occasion, and it's an honor and privilege for me to be able to do that. Debbie actually came to work for the county over 50 years ago, because she started, I guess you would describe it like a temporary employee. There was an act that was passed by Congress, this would have been back like in, I'm sorry, the Nixon era. That was the, the Tom Ransome Employment and Training Act, Karen had helped me do a little research on that. But the purpose of it was designed to train workers and to also introduce them to the public sector where they could get into government work, and so not only for the state government, but it applied to local government as well. And so Debbie came to work with the county in that capacity and did that for over a year, and then after that year, she was hired by the then-county administrator into a clerk's position, so that would have been, I think, in 75. So she came in '74 and '75, you moved into a full-time role, and then I think two years later, you became finance director, and that's a position that she's held ever since. Now, you can imagine 1978 finance director duties and 2025 duties are much different then, so while her title has remained the same, her job responsibilities have grown, I think many of those things would probably fall under the heading of, and other duties as a, that you would see on a job description, but one of the things with Debbie is she's always glad to take on those responsibilities. I know there are some instances where she's had special assignments. A few examples that come to mind, at least for a short period of time here, is when we were absent, a clerk of council, Debbie took on those duties. In between county administrators, she's taken on a budget, which is a large undertaking, it's $82 million, there's a lot that goes involved in preparing that budget, she's handled that so well. And there's so many things too that she does that are outside of normal job responsibilities. She organizes us socially, you know, when we have someone who's had something unfortunate happen to them with their family, or something wonderful happened, she's always the one that arranges a greeting card, makes sure everybody signs it, keeps us informed, and so we appreciate everything you do, and for all of us, and that's why it's a pleasure that you can recognize you for your golden anniversary.
Always a wonderful time of our meeting. I was four when you started working there. Congratulations to all three, but especially Debbie with 50 years, that's something that not many people can say, they worked one place for 50 years. I hope I don't become one of those. All right, item number four, personal appearances. Mr. Antoine Harris with the Public Affairs Specialist with the U.S. Small Business Administration. Is Mr. Antoine here?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Moving right along. Item number five, ordinance number 02012025, an ordinance acting on request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to zoning ordinance number 122401, as revised and amended by the zoning ordinance number 061116 and codified in chapter 153 of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, establishing zoning classifications and districts so as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling 3 and 9/100 acres designated as TMS 295-7 from RS Single Family Residential to RS 2 Rural. This is the public hearing. All right. And looks like we have signed up Mr. Dwayne Morris. Everyone, if you would, if you plan to speak, make sure you come up to the mic, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Oh, and I've got a handout here. Good evening, my name is Dwayne Morris, and my wife of almost 46 years is Janet Epton Morris. I'm here today to discuss an issue that affects families, individuals, and our entire community, housing affordability. Today, we want to urge council to support the rezoning of our property to allow for an affordable manufactured home. The American dream of homeownership should not be exclusive to stick-built and more expensive homes. My daughter's facing relocation because of a divorce with her two children, one of which is disabled. Based on her current income, she can only afford a manufactured home. She is unable to obtain a job outside the home, as one of my grandsons requires 24/7 care, which she provides. We own a three-acre parcel which we plan to divide for the home. The home will require at least an acre and a quarter or more to meet distance requirements from the property lines. We already have a permit for a conventional system, and a driveway is in place. There's no intention to place more than one manufactured home on the property, since there will not be two full acres left after dividing to meet required distances, there's no way to place three homes on the property as has been mentioned in the others' concerns. concerns. Several manufactured homes are located near the property. While some may not currently be occupied, they still exist and demonstrate that manufactured homes are not out of place in this area. Given these circumstances, allowing a manufactured home would provide my daughter and grandsons with a stable, safe, energy-efficient, and affordable living situation while maintaining the integrity of the surrounding community. You have a map print labeled manufactured homes in the area. They are indicated by 20 yellow pins. I'm sure I probably missed some. The red outline is the proposed site on our property. Keep in mind that all of these are less than approximately 300, 3,500 feet or 3/4 of a mile from the property, as measured from the county's own website. As well, you have a Google photo of 603096 Road from 2011. This is directly beside our property. Please notice the manufactured home sitting to the left of the house and one diagonally across the road. The home at 603 Road moved later, as it was no longer deeded. The one diagonally across at 516096 is still in place to this day. You also have a print of a large section from the assessor's website. The location and address is 516096. Please note the legal description, 096 Road, manufactured home on the property. As you can see, the manufactured home has been used here in the past and continues to be in place on property less than 700 feet from the parcel we intend to use. Also, there are pictures of four of the ones on 096 Road and 121 frontages to the west of our parcel, on the other end of 096 Road, indicated by yellow pins. Keep in mind, 096 is only a mile in length from one end to the other. Just because they're not listed as manufactured homes does not mean they aren't there. It can be detitled, and then it is treated as any other building on the property by the county. This is not the first time this has been done with these properties. The final photo you have is not great, but it's from 1994. It shows a manufactured home on Mrs. Hawkins' property for her daughter, Mrs. Crohn's family that resided in at the time. This is the exact same thing we're trying to do for our daughters. It has been discussed whether to relocate the home on property already zoned for R2, but that would require approximately 600 feet of driveway, water line installation, possibly gas, and also securing an easement. These additional expenses would consume unnecessary and unavailable funds that would instead be allocated to essential costs, such as water tap fees, installation of electric service, and septic system. This would deplete the limited funds my daughter has, probably making her abandon owning a home. My little girl and her son should not be placed in a situation of not having a home from a zoning classification that applies to less than 10% of the unincorporated area of the county. I urge you, our community leaders, to take a step in the correct direction by rezoning the property to allow an affordable manufacturing home. As property owner, we should have the use of our property as we deem fit within reason. This is a reasonable request from one of your county residents, as well as a taxpayer. Every one of the residents living on Janet's grandparents' land is there from a parent helping her child. Every one of them. No one has really argued against a manufactured home, only the placement of it, which is less than 400 yards from the R2. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have to stand up here and fight for my little girl and kids to live on my own property.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next signed up is Tracy Turner, I think.
My name is Tracy Pitts Turner. I stand before you tonight as a fourth-generation family member who has lived in this community for 56 years, and I chose to raise my own family there as well. The land and this portion of our community has been in the septic and longshore families for approximately 150 years. My question is this, why does the, what does the county gain by rezoning this piece of property for one person, when clearly we have rows of people who have shown up to protest the rezoning, and the only thing we have to gain from it is preserving our little community? Thank you.
All right. Tyler Turner, on behalf of June Pitts and Longshore.
Tenny, Longshore.
Tenny, Longshore, okay.
Yeah. Hey, guys, Tyler Turner, I've got a handout that you guys have a copy of here. Several you saw of this, of course, last time. This is a comparison of residence types. Now, last time we spoke, we talked about resident types, and Carolina Home Outlet wanted to say that, of course, there was, there were several within a mile. You were shown tonight, there were several within a mile. That's understandable. What I'm referencing when I show this is I'm showing comparable square footages, comparable amounts of acres on the land to compare those values. So the closest one that was of comparable value, those were 1.1 miles apart from one of the existing homes that was there. And of course, you can see there that the values of those comparisons is 217,000 on a stick-built home versus the 83,000 that the county shows on the assessor's website for the manufactured home. The next page that you'll see there, where it shows description of manufactured homes, there's been several things. And yes, mobile homes can be detitled. Most mobile homes, of course, that have been detitled are on things such as a brick crawl space, and, but in a situation where it is block leveled and skirted, which is what's being proposed here, you have a vinyl skirt that essentially is hiding those wheels. And in most of those situations, of course, those are not considered as real estate property, and you'll see that most of them have a separate tax map and number that's associated with a mobile home decal. I have talked to several Realtor friends of mine that stated that, of course, yes, a manufactured home would affect the value of the homes in this area. If you flip over to the next page, the other thing I wanted to highlight is Carolina Home Outlet spoke last time, and they would have you believe that 90% of the homes in the surrounding area are manufactured homes. But the item that you're seeing there with the highlighted section showing Newbury County, this is a direct screenshot from the South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office. It's off their webpage. They use census data to get these numbers, and it clearly shows there on that final line where you see the number of manufactured homes in 2021 was the most recent data that they had on there, and 24% of Newbury County is manufactured home. So it is not close to the 90, 93%, I think was the number that was used. Also, the biggest thing when it comes to, you know, when they're throwing these numbers out from Carolina Home Outlet, the biggest thing you need to realize in that sense is that these guys are profiteers. The only standing that they have in this is standing to gain the money that's put, you know, from the manufactured home put on the property. And that does not matter where that manufactured home is placed, they're going to get paid for that manufactured home regardless, when they sell it, when they receive their commission check from selling it. Next, you'll see the pictures of manufactured homes that are the type that are expected to go there. And the next page, of course, in there is the stick-built homes that are in the area. And you'll see that the type of mobile home that is proposed to be put there is not going to fit in with that, with the community that's already existing. Option one, of course, on the next page, option one is the proposal that's being discussed here tonight. It would permanently change the zoning and install a manufactured home on approximately one acre of land. This is opposed by every surrounding landowner and homeowner within a 300-yard radius, excluding the owner of the property's residence, and that distance was verified on Google Maps. Option two shows you where that would be able to be cut out, and when it talks about easement, the easement would actually come from the landowner's property for his daughter. So as far as working on easement, the biggest thing there would be putting a driveway in. If you want to also flip over next, and there is an option three. And option three that we have is an additional property that's owned by the Morises on 1903 Montgomery Street. You know, most likely, it would have to have some ADA compliant accessibility changes made, which we've already been told would have to be done in a manufactured home anyway. My question on it is, is if there's an existing home that you could just make the updates on and put the family in, why is that not a viable option when verified by MapQuest, that home is only five miles and approximately seven minutes away? So it's still close enough for family to be there to help in a timely fashion, and in that case as well, there's no rezoning required. So option two and option three require no rezoning. So, you know, my question, like I said there again, is why not take an option that does not require that rezoning, that's not opposed by anybody else, and give this family a place somewhere that's good to live, that's still close to her family? So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Next signed up is Leisha Westlinger. Leisha?
My name is Leisha Westlinger. Having had time to think things through, I wanted to share some thoughts. My eight-year-old's favorite thing to say is, "That's not fair." Being a special needs mother for almost 13 years has taught me a lot about fairness, or shall I say, lack thereof. I have been taught some pretty hard lessons. I have had to stand up for what is right more times than I can count. Although the time, the hard times are many, the lessons learned and the growth outweighs it all. You see, Leland, right over there, knows nothing about fairness. He always wears a smile, no matter what obstacles come his way. I have advocated for life-saving equipment, school accommodations, therapies, and heck, even getting more diapers, for goodness sake. But I would never have dreamed I'd be standing here before you all, advocating in this capacity. Life circumstances are beyond our control. Each and every one of you in this room has the potential to be affected, just as I have. Imagine having to quit work so you can care for your loved one. If you're lucky and your loved one qualifies for SSI, you have the possibility of getting $967 per month. This is what happened to me in 2012, when Leland was born. Back then, the highest possible payment per month was $698. But guess what? That $698 went a heck of a lot further than it does now in 2025. This is a silly hypothetical, but say I wanted to buy, use all of my money on eggs for the month. In 2012, I could buy 360, no, sorry, 379 cartons of eggs. Now, in 2025, I can buy 161 eggs, cartons of eggs. I say that to say that every dollar I spend is strategically accounted for. There was a lot more buying power in years past than currently. It has been proposed that the land across the road be used to place the manufactured home on. This is a first for me. I have others not only telling me where to place my home, but how to spend the little bit of money I do have. Now, I'll pose this question, is that fair? It's been said that we are all family and friends at previous meetings. It is my understanding that there has been a manufactured home within 225 feet of the proposed location as recent as 2011. Life circumstances made building a stick-built home attainable, and since then, that mobile, that manufactured home, has been moved. I am glad that both options worked for my friends and family, when they needed it. I stand before you now, asking for that very thing, for the option to be made available for myself and my two boys. As I have stated in previous meetings, this was never my intentions. I've always dreamed of one day having a nice stick-built home. However, that isn't a possibility for me and my boys. And like you, many of you, I enjoy living in the country. I've lived in a home for 16 years where no other houses can be seen. But just like that area and this area, there are all types of diverse homes on that road. It's been mentioned before that having a manufactured home in an open field is an eyesore. Well, that is subjective, and I would have to disagree. I have never thought to myself, now this road would look a whole lot better, whole lot nicer, if that manufactured home would be replaced with a stick-built home. A home is just that, a home, and that is what matters to me. I also, y'all have this paper. This was sent to you all by an email by Leland's case manager, Bright Start, Bright Start case manager. And I just wanted to add to this that the waiver funds available, they do have a cap, and a lot of times, you are not approved all at one time. So the money that they say to spend, however way, I'm probably going to have to spend out of pocket in addition to them helping. That was what I wanted to make on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Westlinger. Randy Suber. Mr. Randy Suber?
I think, I think he wants to go on the other one.
Oh, okay.
Good evening. I'm Kristi Hawkins Metz. I live at 4671 SC Highway 34121, Newbury. I own the land adjoining both sides of this three-acre parcel in discussion, as well as owning land that adjoins Mr. Morris's 13 acres across where he lives, the main highway from this parcel. And my husband and I have seriously considered for quite a while the many varied aspects of the request to rezon these three acres. We have thought about it, and one of the things of the legal issue, he is currently asking for the rezoning of the entire three acres. It is zoned for RS, which would be a stick-built and not the mobile home. If it is rezoned, as noted, it would lower the value of our properties. We do have some concerns about the long-term legal issues. If it should be rezoned for R2, it will forever be R2. Any mobile homes that are there will forever be there, just as some of the homes at the other end of that section, that are mobile homes, were there before there was any zoning, back in the late 1980s or 1990s. So those were there because they were there before any rezoning. Any others who might ever have this property will be allowed, any mobile homes will be there. Regardless of their current intended, stated intent, they cannot foresee the future any more than we can. Situations may arise that necessitate the sale of this property, or maybe even reconfiguring how they want to do the acreage among family, whoever it is. If it's sold, or the future property owners of these three acres may have totally different views about the usage as they do. And since there has been no legal action taken, to our knowledge at this point, of actually deeding any of this land, this acre, this acre and a quarter, this acre and a half, whatever it might be, to his daughter, we have to base our decisions on the legal facts, that being that under the legal facts, there is the possibility of one mobile home per acre. We cannot base our, our decisions right now on the intentions. And I would be remiss if I did not say, we are not insensitive to the situation with Leland, their special needs child, who they've stated numerous times is at the heart of this whole relocation and rezoning issue, to be closer to family for help. On the contrary, we cannot understand why they would not want to have their daughter and their two grandsons to live right on the same side of the main, of the main highway with them. That way, they'd be able to visit back and forth a lot easier, quicker, especially in those emergency times. As grandparents, we know what it means to be available to your family at a moment's notice. We find it hard to understand why, given their assets, as you will hear, that they are going about this route to rezon a property that everyone else in that community reasons it wants to stay the same. Now, we understand that... Now, we understand that she has chosen that the mobile home is the best fit for her. We don't deny that, I mean, that's fine. But, if that is the case, then they could have already... she could have already been much closer into that process of being nearer her family by choosing to relocate on a spot of land that they already own, that's currently already zoned R2. And so I just want you to consider those things, and I ask you to carefully consider this issue. What would be the best for the existing community who want it to remain RS, as it is? And for Leland, who really needs that close contact, then, right there at you, in the area, the land you already have, that's zoned R2. Thank you.
Erin Willis.
My name is Erin Willis, and I live at 4595 South Carolina Highway 34121. I am the owner of adjacent property in discussion for rezoning. I grew up in the house next door to where my husband and I built our home four years ago. I understand that the property owner, Mr. Morris, wishes to support his daughter during her challenging times, but this issue not only affects the present, but also the future of this land. Mr. Morris and his wife have owned the property for approximately two years, and they've only lived in their current home for approximately six months. And in fact, per the county tax records, they do not claim this current property as their primary residence. Instead, they claim their home on Montgomery Street in the city of Newberry as their primary residence. Mr. Morris and his wife currently own approximately 13 acres across the road from the three acres in question. That land is already zoned for a mobile home to be placed there. He and his daughter have stated repeatedly that she needs to be near them for quick assistance with her son, and having them directly behind their current home on Highway 34121 would mean that they could get to them much quicker than the property in question. If rezoned, the land could legally house three mobile homes. I understand that at present, this may not be their intent, but at the last county council meeting, Ms. Westlinger herself indicated that they intend to put at least two mobile homes there in the future. My other concern is that in order for a perk test to be given, completed by DHEC, one must show ownership of that land, and Mr. Morris did this, not Ms. Westlinger. So, is it's intent to rent out the property to other mobile homes to be placed there? That brings up a whole 'nother realm of issues that I will not go into tonight. We have heard from Mr. Brandon Davis and Mr. Mitch Howard several times about mobile homes. They don't have a vested interest in the long-term effects that rezoning could have on the property in question. The only vested interest they have is putting some green in their pockets. They don't look out their door every day at the green pasture in the front yard like I do. They don't see the farmer that uses the land for part of his livelihood, or the fresh bell hay. They stated that the lifespan of a mobile home is 30 to 40 years. I guess they haven't taken the time to really look at the homes in the neighborhood. My house is the latest that was built. It is four years old. Most of the homes in the neighborhood are 30-plus, with one being close to 100 years old, and it is still lived in. None of these homes are mobile homes, and they are all stick-built. Yes, there are mobile homes on Old 96th Road. Yes, they have been there, but again, it was before rezoning. You are talking 14-plus years ago. I am the one that has the most to lose. I'm suggesting that they put the mobile home in my backyard. I'm the one that would have to look out every day of the mobile home. Ms. Westlinger wants you to believe that she only receives money from SSI, but that's not the reality. She receives child support and other resources for Leland. There is other money. Not only that, she has a GoFundMe set up to help pay for her needs in relation to this house. So if it is a driveway or whatever, there is money set aside for that. How would you feel if someone moved into your neighborhood and within six months was trying to change the entire landscape of things? I don't think any of you would like it, especially if you knew they already had a place to help their daughter, and that place is right in their backyard or their second home that they own. If they don't like that option, like I said, there's a second home in town. I speak for all those in the neighborhood when I say that we all object to the land being rezoned to allow for mobile homes. There are over two rows of us here tonight, all neighbors objecting to this. There is not one person who owns property that says, "Okay, let's go with the mobile home rezoning." We say, "Okay, if there's 13 acres across the road, put it there, that is fine," but not to put it on the three acres in question. Again, we object to a mobile home being placed there, as it will change all of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Hannah Metz.
Good evening, my name is Hannah Metz. My grandmother is Katherine Hawkins, who owns property on one side of the three-acre tract. My parents are Vaughn and Kristy Metz, who own property on the other side of the three-acre tract. I grew up on Highway 34121. My sister resides there. She actually built a house right beside my parents. So, we understand about parents helping their children, because that's exactly what my family has done. Let me be clear, this property has been in our family, which is the Efting family, for over 90 years. My grandmother, who is here tonight, was born on some of this property, and she'll be 94 in May. So, I want you to understand, this is our family property, that's the way we look at it. Everyone in this room, including myself, are sympathetic to Ms. Westinger's family and housing situation, and certainly want them to have a place to live. We have two major concerns, though. There are already existing and available options for housing for her, and then, what's the future impact of the rezoning if it's allowed? I ask you to look at a handout that was previously given to you. Page two of that handout shows... the lighter color blue is the RS on Highway 34 and 121, and the darker color blue is R2. So most of the property that's RS is actually on road frontage on either 34121 or Old 96th Road. So logistically, I want to talk about kind of currently available options that have already been discussed. On the 13-acre tract that the landowner owns, there's a home that could be utilized. There's also acreage that is zoned R2 that could be utilized. What better way to support your family than to have them in your backyard? That's what my sister did, she built right beside my parents. My nephews were able to walk back and forth. My parents were able to walk back and forth versus going across a very busy highway. This option doesn't need to be approved by anybody. It's available today. Another option is a house that the Morises own in town. So they have two homes. Whether they let their daughter live in one temporarily, whether they let their daughter live in one long-term, whether they rent one of those homes to help pay for expenses, there are options for all of these issues that they've raised. And we fully support those options. I also ask you to think about the future. As we all know, manufactured homes deteriorate quickly, more quickly than traditional homes. When they deteriorate, they depreciate in value, you know? So if we're looking at something that depreciates over a 30-year period of time, what does the county have to gain by rezoning? Are you really gaining that much in taxes? This isn't a request to put it into commercial use, where the county might gain something financially. This is something that's going to depreciate over time. This is our family property. This means a lot to my grandmother, because her parents worked really hard for this property. We are asking you to consider why the property owners can't use options already available to them tonight. When we look at this property, we see it as agricultural use. On either side of this three-acre tract, there's a farmer who puts out manure at least once a year. He then bells hay, or he grows wheat. He's gonna still do that, no matter the outcome. But that's what the property has been used for, for over 90 years. Why change it when there are available options? We request that you honor the neighborhood's support of the current use of this property and... excuse me, deny the rezoning request. Thank you.
Try. Brandon Dean?
Should be Davis, sorry. Terrible handwriting.
It's all right.
I'm Brandon Davis. I live at 134 Anderson Drive in Prosperity. Previously noted before, I worked with Carolina Home Outlet, but also, I work for J-PAC Enterprise Memo, I own that, as a nonprofit that we use to consult and work with people that don't like to engage in public speaking and are nervous and do things, and so we go around and help people. And I'll leave to some of the comments made in that. Sounds like people are worried about us profiting, but we do have a natural interest in our clients. We do care. We're a staple in the community. We've been here since 1999, or, well, the owner has. I've been with the company since 2019, and we formed our nonprofit in 2021. Is the slide ready, my friend? I've got a few pictures I want to go through. Oh, we don't do the... Oh, I didn't know. But what I had prepared was a few pictures of some aged mobile homes that were 25 to 30 years old in similar areas, and they were well-maintained. Just wanted to give y'all some visual aids, but again, I didn't know about that, as far as that goes. And there was a reference made about 93... in the previous meeting, we took aerial footage of 32 square foot of that area, and 93% of that area was zoned R2. We actually went to Brian Kelly at GIS and actually had him check on everything, and found out the county is actually 80% manufactured housing-friendly, and according to them, whether you guys choose the R2 it or RS, it would kind of fit with either proposal. So we're not gonna argue that, because there's so much around it. But, I don't see what the true... I guess the issue is here, because some of the people that stood here before you did not have had manufactured housing in that same area before. They use it to their benefit, like Leisha stated before. But now that it's coming up at this time, it's an issue. If family's family, let's work it out. Let's do the right thing. It's not about profit, just like the gentleman said, "Yeah, we're in business, everybody here that's in business is making a profit." He's in insurance, I heard, so I'm sure he knows about profit, too. But let's look at the right thing to do, is take care of the family, do what's right, and also with the home, we can brick underpinned if they so choose to. Right now, the option is premium vinyl skirting, but we don't hide wheels and axles anymore. That stuff is taken out. That house is double-period block, and it is on ABS footer pads. The same way we set our houses up, or Mitch has them set up, FHA could use that foundation, and will support that foundation, and it's approved by the state. So, the quality and the setup is not an issue. Now, it's a preference on white premium vinyl that's vented, or brick underskirting. They serve the same purpose. The brick has no benefit other than a look and a little bit increase in cost, and it adds a little bit to it. Matter of fact, with premium venting, it's better because you're getting moisture barrier under the house, and every other piece of that vinyl is vented to create airflow and great things under the house. Keep it coarse dry, keep things safe and sound, and keep it ventilated under the house. With brick, you don't get as much ventilation. You get 17 vents and two trap doors, so yes, you do have enough ventilation to pass inspections, but it's not the same. So actually, premium vinyl siding or underskirting is a better option in the upkeep of the house. Again, the brick skirting is just a skirting, it has no structural value at all to the foundation of the house. And Mr. Dewayne said mostly everything else we had to say, and I apologize, I didn't know about the USB thing tonight, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
I have a statement incorrect that was said about me by the previous fellow that was up there. I'd just like to correct that if I could, with one sentence.
Yeah, just one moment.
Okay.
My name is Mitch Howard, I do own Carolina Home Outlet. The fellow said that I had stood here and said 93% of Newberry County was manufactured homes. I did not say that. There's no county in South Carolina that I know of that's 93% manufactured homes. What I said was within that area, in Quaker Roads, right down the street, that 93% in that area was manufactured homes. I did not say the county, and that's all I've got to say. I just wanted to correct that. I would not stand your story to the county. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for getting them to speak on this particular one. This is a tough one. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion that this be second reading?
You gotta close the public hearing first.
Oh, sorry. I now declare the public hearing closed, and this is the second reading. Do I have a motion that this be second reading? Have a motion by Councilman Reardon to have a second. Second by Mr. Sees. Any discussion? All in favor of this being second reading? All vote?
I believe he said he was opposed?
He did.
So, just to clarify, can I give that again, for who was in favor and who was opposed?
So...
We just opposed in second reading.
Second reading, but are we voting yes or no when we say we want this to be second reading?
Are we in favor of this being the second reading, correct?
That's right. What you're voting on is, are you going in favor of the rezoning or against?
Okay, okay. That's different. Let's do that again.
All right, all in favor of...
There is no one who shares this by God or God is better than...
Please do.
No one would have more input to have a child with special needs, but I think there's better ways to approach this.
All right. Revote. Mr., do you have something?
Yeah, I'd like to say so.
You would? Go ahead.
I'm sympathetic to the family as well, but I also have to look at the fact that when the family has other property, and where they want to build this home is across this busy highway, when you have a disabled child, I think it would benefit the child better to be closer to the family. And that's my concern, because in case of an emergency, if you got to get across a busy street to get to that individual, yeah, I think that's gonna be more problems than if that family was wrapped behind the other family. So I'm kind of concerned because of the child, and that's my biggest concern, is the child.
Any other discussion?
I'd also like to say that I'm sympathetic to the cause also, but we have other options. My concern is to protection of the landowners in the future, because once it's zoned R2, they can do anything they want to, that you can do on R2, which is not... everybody next to them and joining them across the street is all RS right now, and I just feel that the landowners need to be protected, because there's other options.
Anyone else? Governor?
I know all the families here tonight, and I know the family want to move the mobile home there, but I also want, well, the land they own behind this highway. I don't understand that big cliff tonight, that why he want to put it on 121, who are doing a little shopping every five minutes on 121. And it's sitting behind the house that Marley moved into. They got land back there already capable of doing what they want to do, why can't they use that? So, I started holding you low cliff. So, I started holding you low, Chris, upsetting the whole families on 121, I mean, they were all on. I don't understand that. No, I, I like mobile homes. I have two. There's nobody in. Not putting nobody in them. One, double Y, I was saying Y. On 121, me and, me and my neighbor discussed that issue. He didn't want me in, I said, I ain't gonna put nobody in them. So, it's just agreement we have with the two mobile homes that I own. Nobody standing on right now. One of them is Marley's home, that's double Y. But me and him, me and him debated on where I put it in his front door. I would not, and I didn't, nobody standing on there. It's a Marley's home. Three bedrooms, running walls such as to heat to it. No one standing in it, because I agree with him that I would put nobody in it, and not in his front door. But I understand that we all must come down, come down to life with one another. We're gonna do what's best for all of us, not one family. We want to satisfy everybody in the neighborhood to try to have a family together, all of us should be working together. Do what's best. The child, he don't know what's best for him, we know what's best for him. Put him, put him in the parent's backyard, he can go that, back home, without any shepherding. Think that would benefit the family much better. Yes, sir?
I can elaborate if you get this over there.
Would you please do that?
Well, we've, we've had, we've had public comments. We're not gonna debate back and forth.
I'll just go answer, Senator.
No.
We're, that, that part's over with, with the debate. Anything else, Governor Scurry?
Yes, sir.
I have just a few things to say. I sympathize, sympathize with both sides. I really do. I'm not gonna be one to, to say what you should do with your property, with your other properties, what, where you should put who, where, when, and why. It's not, that's not on me to do. You're asking us to rezonate a piece of property that, that you own, and it's just a bad situation. I'm, I'm, I don't know the situation the family's in or nothing else. It's a tough situation, but we're gonna have to vote the way we feel. All in favor of rezoning the property? Please signify by raising your hand. All opposed to rezoning? It is five-two.
I vote no.
Five-two. Next on...
Our hearing is out. We have to leave. Our hearing is out. We're right in the middle of the hearing.
All right. All right, moving on. Number six, ordinance number 02022025, an ordinance acting on request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to zoning ordinance number 122401, as revised and amended by zoning ordinance number 061116, and codified in chapter 153 of Newberry County Code of Ordinances, establishing zoning classifications in districts so as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling two and seventy-eight hundredths acres designated as TMS number 741-79 from RS Single Family Residential to GC General Commercial. This is the public hearing. I now declare the public hearing open. Having no one signed up for the public hearing, I now declare the public hearing closed. This is the second reading. All in favor...
Motion.
I need a motion.
I got it right here.
You got it right here. Second down here. Any discussion?
I'd like, I'd like to know if there's anybody who has voted against that property being rezoned. Is there anybody that has? No one?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of, no.
Any more discussion? All in favor of this being rezoned? All opposed? Chairman Johnson?
Past chairman.
Past Chairman Johnson?
I'm in favor.
He's in favor? Okay. It is unanimous. All right, number seven, ordinance number 02032025, an ordinance to amend chapter 154 of the Code of Ordinances of County of Newberry, South Carolina, to adopt updated Newberry County Land Development Regulations. This is the public...
In that case, won't we have the public hearing?
Sure.
This, I, I just want the public to be aware, this has absolutely nothing to do with the proposed development, 773. That was something that was proposed to the legislature land committee, and we have not even received that, much less that first reading, only our purpose. And so, those who have reached out and have attached and be ugly about it, that they've completely misunderstood about where we are in this process, that they're trying to codify some things, and so, I, I, I just think we should be clear about that before we have the public hearing.
Yes, this has nothing to do about a housing subdivision that was discussed previously in, in another meeting.
Yes, that, that was in the future for land development and planning and zoning, that, that came, maybe come to us, yes, unless there's enough for a vote, and so, I, I just think it's unfair for those who attack us, the team that we're at the second meeting, when the truth is, we never received it, and I just want to be straight forward about that.
Thank you, Councilman. All right. This is the public hearing for this. So, we have Stephen McKee.
How are y'all tonight? Good? Great. Hey, I show up every once in a while, and I like to speak about being good stewards of the taxpayers' money. So, tonight, I'd like to talk to you about a couple of things that has to go hand in hand with the actual land development regulations in the ordinance here. Infrastructure, it's a big word. A lot of people always say, what does infrastructure mean? I want to get down to the brass tacks, the simple things that we don't have in Newberry County for infrastructure right now. How many people have to take their own trash off to the dome? So, I leave the house at 5:30 in the morning, and I get home at 5:00 in the afternoon. Can I take my trash to the dome Monday through Friday?
Only on selected days.
Only on selected days. Okay. All right. That's one part of infrastructure we're lacking at a little bit in Newberry County, but that's not all the parts. It's just a quick example I wanted to throw out real quick. Before we start talking about the subdivisions, before we start talking about properties may or may not be decided upon for subdivision at this time, I looked over these regulations. I think it's a good starting point, but I think that we're missing some things. First off, on our staff, I don't see anybody that's associated with the American Planning Association, all right? I think that would be key if one of our, either planning or zoning officials at county level was actually an American planner, or had an affiliation with the American Planning Association. That would allow people to take a look and talk to other communities about what they're doing in the subdivision regulations. For instance, we know what's going on in Lexington and Richland County, okay? Richland County came in at four hundred and forty-five thousand folks over there with seven hundred and fifty-seven square miles to develop or not to develop. Lexington County is at three hundred and thirteen, nine fifty-one for a population, six hundred and ninety-nine square miles. Then there's Newberry County, thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-five folks out here, okay, with six hundred and thirty miles, square miles, all right, to be used. Most people that I know that live in Newberry County, live in Newberry County because we like the rural agricultural living, all right? Most people have some acreage, I'm not gonna say some more than others, but like the actual rural living that we have here in Newberry County. How do we actually plan for subdivisions to interchange with that rural living that we have here, all right? Right now, when you go down Jolly Street Road, we have a new subdivision that's right across from Carol Wicker's garage and the property over there. And when you go down and you take a look at it, honestly, it looks out of place. When you look over as you drive down that road, and you see all those houses packed so tightly in what used to be farmland over there, you say, okay, that's fine. All right, how are we gonna meet those needs? We take a look around, we talked about this a while ago, about where does the actual water and sewer run in this county? And it only runs in certain places, all right? We have two-thirds of Newberry County does not have an opportunity to be on the Newberry County Water and Sewer Authority, even though it's a private entity, I understand that. There's only about ten thousand or so customers that they have. That leaves a balance of about twenty-nine thousand people here in this county that are at septic and well water right now. So, when we start talking about bringing in people into Newberry County, can we provide for those needs? We've helped out the Newberry County Water and Sewer Authority, and they are building a bigger facility down at Cannons Creek, but will they be able to take on all the needs, plus the economic development that was previously talked before? I'm not sure. I'd like to see a little bit more of a plan, you know, when we go into the actual regulations about what a subdivision is, to make sure that we're gonna be able to actually, you know what I mean, provide water and sewer. That's a tough one. Nobody, nobody in this entire room would like to go home and find out that their well is dry, and there is no chance of you getting water back on your property. Nobody. That is like, oof, that'd be horrible. But we draw a lot of water out of the ground here in this county. We draw for agricultural purposes, as well as others, and we need to try to balance that, and figure out how we're gonna do it. I'd like to see that addressed. Couple of things I'd like to see addressed as well, I'd like to see the...
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Be out from behind this thing, if that's all right. Jody Hamm, 8186 Highway 395 here in Newberry. Lifelong resident, former school board member, former farmer, former DEHAC employee. We need to make sure, just as the gentleman said, we need to make sure we're planning for this stuff. You can't eat a house. Agriculture is very important in our county. We just need to be very careful. I know you said this wasn't about the subdivision, but it is indirectly about future subdivisions. And if we don't plan appropriately, appropriately, we're not gonna have the infrastructure. Being on school board for twenty-one years, it will affect schools, and we need to make sure that whatever developer comes in here, whether it be impact fees, setbacks, whatever we can do to make these kind of subdivisions more palatable to the neighbors. I, I tried to divide some property up, give it to my son, was told I had to have an acre. But these developers come in, and they'll put five houses on that. So, I just, I don't understand all our zoning, but I want to make sure y'all are thinking and planning for all this stuff, because it is gonna be to the detriment of Newberry County. And as the gentleman said, with thirty-nine thousand people, growth is coming, we all know it, Chaykin's full. But we don't want to look like Chaykin, and we don't want to look like Lexington. So, thank y'all for your time. I just hope that y'all be careful in your considerations.
My name is Tyler Johnson. I live in the Mount Bethel-Garmin community of Newberry County, and I speak tonight on behalf of the concerned citizens in Newberry County. We are concerned with the current infrastructure in Newberry County in regards to development. We are not against development in this county, but we're concerned with the strain brought upon infrastructure by these developments. In a lot of these meetings about developments, we hear about the availability of electricity, water, and sewer by the developers, and their willingness to cover the cost of these. But we don't hear about fire, EMS, police, solid waste collection, roads, and schools. Electricity, water, and sewer are important investments, but these are investments into private businesses in our county. Fire, EMS, police, solid waste, roads, and schools are equally important investments, and these investments are owned and operated by our county. This puts a financial burden on the county and its taxpayers to provide these infrastructure upgrades to accommodate these developments. We can easily look to neighboring counties and see where their slow response to these issues have created unrecognizable landscapes in these areas when compared to just ten to twenty years ago. Several points to address these concerns and allow as little possible infringement upon the Newberry County taxpayers and neighboring property owners of these developments would be a buffer zone around the entire property line of these developments. The further establishment of concurrency to better understand and address the added strains on infrastructure by these developments, and more stringent regulations and definition of green space that allow developers currently to build on smaller lots than what is stated in our current zoning ordinances. These recommended changes would just be a starting point for strengthening our land development regulations that hopefully y'all could expand upon if given more time to fully address this matter. Newberry County is a rural in nature county, and I've been glad to hear it mentioned before here by county council, is one with a backbone built on agriculture. I hope and pray it remains one, with well-thought-out development and not reckless development that has damaged neighboring counties. Thank you for y'all's time tonight.
Good evening. I'm sorry about the inconvenience. My wife signed me up for the wrong reading.
It happens.
It happens. As I was coming out of Columbia yesterday, I used to work in Columbia and around, but I just noticed one thing, coming out of Columbia, I came up to Peak Exit at 5:00. I could not believe it. To get off at the Peak Exit, there was a line of traffic one mile long. Do we want that in Newberry County? All this land development, do we really want that? And all these fires in California, do we want houses built ten foot apart? Why not an acre to a house? We need to really think about this, y'all. And as far as taking trash off, I don't mind taking my trash off, do y'all? And my well, my well hadn't went dry in fifty years. So, please take all this consideration. Thank you.
With no one else signed up, I will declare the public hearing over.
I did sign up, and I just found out about this today. So, I don't know if you want to speak about it or not.
We'll allow you a few, just a few minutes. Come up, state your name and address, please.
That's right. My name is Tom Costura, and I live in Prosperity. I live on a little bit of acreage, not a lot. I've got...
I've got seven acres. But my, all my neighbors have property around me. I've lived in cities and one-third acre lots. And I, my kids grew up on one of those. But eventually, when I retired, I says, "I want some property." And I came here, and I have it. And there's things about having a lot of property versus a little bit of property. Some people don't care. They don't want to cut a lot of grass and do things like that. But we do need to think about the impacts on our structural services, the schools. We're going to pay for them, not somebody else, not a developer. We should be required to implement a plan that's going to fund all of the emergency services. Fire trucks aren't cheap. Schools are very expensive. And like everybody has said so far, this is a rural neighborhood, and we like it that way. I like it that way. I'm very pleased that it is that way. And I hope that when you guys decide to do whatever you're going to do, that you're going to remember that the folks that live here are going to have to foot the bill for it after the developers leave. Thank you.
I will now declare the public hearing to be over with, for real. This is the second reading. Do I have any, do I have a motion as such?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a couple of comments first, then I'll make a motion. First off...
After the second motion, and then we can do the discussion.
Okay, all right, we can do that.
It doesn't approve, it just allows you to repeat.
All right, okay, we can do that. Well, I'll tell you what, I'll make my motion then.
You have a motion. How about a second?
Hang on a minute, hang on. My motion is that we table this second reading at this time. Give staff an opportunity in order to address some of the comments and concerns that I think we've heard tonight, and come back to us with something to address the issues that has been brought up. So I motion that this time that we table this to a later date. Is that appropriate?
Well, I wondered if I could offer some clarifications.
Sure.
Just addressing some of those and also clarifying what land development regulations are and sort of how they fit within our planning program here at the county.
Please do.
So what's before council tonight are land development regulations. And what the land development regulations do, it doesn't decide where subdivisions go, how big the lots are, how far apart the houses have to be. What it dictates are what the infrastructure requirements are if there is a major subdivision. And in Newberry County, in this new ordinance, we have land development regulations now. This is reworking what we have on the books and trying to improve it. A major subdivision in Newberry County is five or more lots when property is split into that, or if property is split into less than five lots, but a road is required, and that triggers a major subdivision review process. The review and the plat requirements are designed to ensure that infrastructure is installed to support the subdivision and that that infrastructure meets county standards. And for county standards, what we've done is we've mirrored, basically adopted, in many cases state, not all, but in many cases state standards. So when you look at the roads, we're using SEDOT standards. In some cases, we're referring to, it used to be DEHEC, now it's DES, Department of Environmental Service standards. No need to recreate your wheel, so we've got some consistency with those. What determines where development can occur and the intensity, you know, how dense it is, or in some cases, you know, where we don't have high density, is the zoning ordinance. Both of those items follow our comprehensive plan. And so council last year adopted a new comprehensive plan for Newberry County. We're required to do that every 10 years, and so it was time to do that, and council did. And what that did is it identified the areas in the county that we felt like if we were going to have future development, that it would be ideal for it to occur in those areas. And what guided council's decision-making on that was the presence of infrastructure, like water and sewer. Where there's already development impact, areas on major corridors, areas next to or adjacent to our seven municipalities, you know, in many ways, council actually reduced the area of the county compared to the previous comprehensive plan that is identified as potentially developable in the future. And so the comprehensive plan is sort of like, you know, what is our vision for Newberry County over the next 10 years, and what do we want to be when we grow up? The zoning and the land development regulations, the latter of which is before council now, is sort of a tool for trying to achieve that vision. And so what council is looking at tonight are design standards and requirements that would apply if a piece of property is zoned correctly where it could be developed as a subdivision. And that's been approved by the planning commission and council, and then what the requirements would be for that subdivision and what would have to appear on the plat. I know, I can appreciate the comment that was made about the American Planning Association. They have a certification program, it's called AICP. It's the American Institute of Certified Planners. We do not have an AICP member of staff. We do have two master code professionals and certified building officials. We do not have an AICP, but we do have two planning consultants who both have AICP certifications and drafted this ordinance. So we do have that. One of the things that was brought up as well was concurrency, and concurrency is the, it's really a construct, it's not a concept. Where you have agencies, for instance, like the school district, or a water and sewer utility, or an electric utility, that would review development proposals to, and then provide their feedback, you know, do we have the capacity to serve it? Do we have lines in that area? What will be the impact on the school that would serve this particular piece of property in this development based on the intensity or the scope of the development that's being proposed? That is in this ordinance. This ordinance creates a land development review committee. That review committee is coordinated by our building and zoning director and has representatives of Public Works, DOT, county fire, county 911, the department, well, it used to be DEHEC, DES, stormwater manager, FEMA, electric service providers, water providers, and sewer providers. One thing that I did catch in going through the ordinance between first and second reading, which is tonight, is that we had intended to have the school district listed. And of course, we would work with the superintendent's here this evening, we would work with him and the school board to make sure that the appropriate person is involved and is on that development review committee. The version that I'm looking at right now on my computer screen, I added that and highlighted it. So it was supposed to be in there, and I did not catch the fact that it was not. A couple other things I'd like to mention, and this is not addressing any of the comments that we've received tonight, but there were a couple of items that y'all asked us to incorporate into the land development regulations, and I'd like to mention those to you if you don't mind, because that is a change from first to second reading. And I highlighted those in green as well, and I'm in the process of trying to scroll, sorry. The first was a concern that, you know, a property owner could use incremental subdivisions of land, you know, splitting their piece of property, let's say, into two pieces, and could do that over a period of time and then get around the requirements in the land development regulations, i.e. for like a road, or water and sewer, whatever the design requirements would be that would be in play. And so y'all asked, hey, is there some way we can address that? And so when you look in section 26A, there's language in there in subsection 7 about parent tracks. And here, what we attempted to do was to say, all right, in a 10-year period, if a parent track, a parcel, is split five times, it triggers the major subdivision requirement, which would be a preliminary plat. You know, that preliminary plat goes to the planning commission, it's reviewed by the planning commission, the planning commission provides input, and that input has to be incorporated in the final plat that is submitted. So we've got that language in there addressed. Another item that y'all asked us about were cemeteries. You know, we've got a number of cemeteries scattered throughout the county on private land, and of course, there are, there are state laws that address cemeteries. You know, I know one issue that I faced with the piece of property I own is just descendants wanting to access the graves of their ancestors. And of course, reasonable access has to be provided by a landowner in that case, but there are other requirements, too. And so we've added language, and this is scrolling like really slowly, related to cemeteries, and it requires that they be identified on the plat. Here we go, sorry. And this is in section 52, subsection E, cemeteries. And what we asked is that, or what we're requiring is that the cemetery be considered open space and left undisturbed, must be protected by a 15-foot setback and buffer on all sides. Pursuant to South Carolina law, regional access must be provided to family members and descendants of those buried in the cemetery, and that all provisions of the South Carolina Code of Laws, the South Carolina Code of Regulations, and orders of the governor of South Carolina applicable to cemeteries, grave sites, and burial grounds shall be adhered to and complied with. So we felt like that addressed concerns y'all raised at the last meeting. And then any concerns you might have about like desecration or some other unlawful act with cemeteries would probably be better addressed in a standalone cemetery ordinance. And I've actually taken a crack at drafting that based on some other examples I've found, and you know, that might be something y'all want to look at later this spring. It's fine if you, obviously, that's council's call if you want to table the ordinance. I just wanted to clarify what this actually is. And we feel, obviously, we're recommending to you, we feel like it's an upgrade of what, you know, we currently have in place now.
Thank you for the clarification.
Oh, yes, sir.
I go back to my motion. I still would like to table the second reading, give us some opportunity in order to do some comparison between this versus our neighboring counties, see what we've got. Based on some comments tonight, I certainly feel like we need to do what we can do in order to strengthen as much as what we can. So certainly, I think, I reiterate, I'd like to table. And that's my motion.
All right, have a motion to table it?
Now second it.
Have a second to table it? Any discussion?
I do think that Mr. Fulmer is right that we need to table it and revisit it, but I do have some concerns that we've intrinsically lead the housing development with this, and I want to separate those two if we do, Fulmer. But I don't have a problem at all with tabling it and addressing those concerns.
I also think when we talk, when we start talking about housing developments, that those entities that were brought up, I think those individuals need to be invited so that they'll be able to answer questions that, for the concerns of the citizens.
No doubt. I don't think that, in my opinion, I don't think that these code ordinances need or allow that development, since they were great. And I would go on record as saying I am adamantly opposed to that, but I do think we need growth in Newberry County.
All right. We have a motion and a second to table this. All in favor? Councilman Johnson?
I do make a note, I do agree with the motion to table it.
All right. It is unanimous. Number eight, ordinance number 02042025, an ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance of Newberry County, South Carolina, as codified in chapter 153 of the Code of Ordinances of Newberry County, South Carolina, to establish regulations for the issuance of permits for the keeping of chickens on a non-commercial basis on residential properties in Newberry County as an accessory use. This is the first reading. Do I have a motion that this be first reading? Councilman Seast, second by Councilman Fulmer. Any discussion? Any thing changed?
The question is, we worked really hard to bring this to you, and if people have issues, I would say that they would come forward now and that it was rather than why we should have started reading and gone forward.
Anything changed?
No, no, nothing's changed. I just want to, maybe a little bit of history on this, you know, we discovered that we had an issue with the zoning ordinance where, you know, if your property was zoned residential single-family, RSM, which is residential single-family with a manufacturer unit, RSV, which also allows a, it's residential single-family and recreational vehicle or RVs, and general residential, that you couldn't have chickens. So the attempt here was to come up with some, a reasonable allowance for it that kind of struck a balance. Of course, like was mentioned earlier, with mobile homes, the vast majority of Newberry County is zoned R2, which is agricultural, and you can certainly have hens and roosters there, and we don't limit the number of them or require that they be enclosed. So the vast majority of the county this doesn't apply to. But in those areas that it does, it would allow hens, not roosters, and a number not to exceed 18, and the exact number of hens would be based on really the dimensions of the property so that setbacks are met for the enclosures that the hens are kept in. And like you said, I mean, this is something that we've been working on, and, you know, like the zoning amendments and the land development regulations, it's gone through the planning commission to come to council, and, you know, if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor? I think we lost Councilman Johnson.
I think we did, yeah, sorry.
So it's unanimous of those who are here. All right. Item number nine, an ordinance number 02052025, an ordinance amending section 152.04 of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, chapter 152, flood damage prevention, to clarify the date of the flood insurance study of the Federal Emergency Management Agency identifying areas of special flood hazard within Newberry County, South Carolina, in reference therein. This is the first reading. Do I have a motion that this be first reading? Motion by Mr. Seast, second, second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add, too, this is, you know, we use the FEMA model ordinance. Y'all adopted this, I believe, third reading was in January, and then we were informed by them, instead of referencing the flood insurance study generically, it needed to be dated, and so this would just provide that date.
Very good. Any further discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number 10, appointments. Anyone have any appointments tonight?
I do. I have an appointment for the joint planning commission at large for the town of Little Mountain, who has been recommended by Mayor Janet Giroux, and that's Mr. Tom Crowe, C-R-O-E. And Andrew has his name and address already.
All right. We have Mr. Crowe. Do we have a motion to accept, Mr. Crowe? We have a motion by Councilman Reader, second. Councilman Smith, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Any other appointments? Okay.
We'll do the next one.
Okay. All right. All right. Item number 11, public comments. Mr. David Adams. Would please step forward and state your name, address, and we've three minutes on.
David Adams, 641 Ham's Landing Road. I'm just here about the chickens. I got five acres, had chickens for about eight, nine, 10 months. My neighbor found out that it wasn't legal, so he turned me in for it. That's why we're even here talking about the chickens. So I just wanted to voice my opinion that it's ridiculous. You have five acres of land out in the country, but you can't have chickens, but you can have them right here downtown Newberry. So my fight is just to allow me to have chickens. And just, you know, price of eggs, everybody knows what the price of eggs are right now. So I've lost my chickens. I gave them up because zoning said I couldn't have them, but I want them back, and I think I should have been able to do that. So thanks for your time, guys.
There's a whole lot of stuff I want to talk about. I just don't know what's most important. I looked at some of the development stuff recently, and, you know, we spend like over $14,000 per kid that we send to school. So we put a little small house in, all the rest of us in these developments that are multifamily houses. When you put all those things in there, and they get two or three kids, they got two kids, that's almost $30,000 for spending on that house for school taxes, just the schools. They're not going to make up that amount by a long shot paying their little $2,000 a year in property tax. So all the rest of us in the county are going to have to cover it. Now, I agree that we need the housing for our people to live here that are small, that is inexpensive, but bringing in a bunch of people in low-income houses is basically robbing us all because we're all having to cover that extra expense. So when I see some of these building development plans, I'll say, oh, well, you know, it's only so much for the fire, it's only so much for this, it's only so much for that. Nobody seems to be able to put all the numbers out there together at the same time. So we just look at this little piece, or that little piece, or that little piece. But if you just look at what it costs per kid to educate them, two kids in a house is $30,000 bucks, we're all having to come up with. You can say, oh, well, only half of it's coming out of your property tax. Well, then the other half's coming out of your state tax. Who pays that? We still pay it. So no matter where it's coming from, it's still an expense. So when we're looking at development and development plans and development projects, little projects for first-term home buyers sound great, but if they're not for our people, if they're like on the interstate for people coming in and moving in, they're costing us money. And quite honestly, needs like that, they need to stay in Richland County or Lexington County, and we need to develop our place smarter and wiser so that our tax base doesn't go up. And I guess that's all I had to say about that part. Thank you.
Comments from the county administrators?
No, sir. I don't have any. Thank you.
All right. Comments from council? Councilman Fulmer?
Sure. First off, I need to say thank you to staff. Minister Shaker and his staff do an excellent job putting these ordinances together. I greatly appreciate them. They do a heck of a job. Y'all seen tonight, we've got quite a few ordinance that we booted on tonight, and for a limited amount of staff that we have, y'all do an excellent job. Thank you. I appreciate the efforts that you put into it, for sure. We certainly get our money's worth out of you for that, for sure. So anyway, going back to some of the ordinance that we booted on tonight, thank y'all for coming. Appreciate everybody coming out. It's always good in order to get feedback from the citizens. We need that. We need to know where you are, where you stand on things. Certainly, one of the big ones tonight, the land development ordinance, that's one that is near and dear to a lot of folks. Certainly, it's not all, as Minister Shaker pointed out, we've got other ordinances that play into that as well, but this is a start. We got to start from somewhere. We enjoy a tremendous quality of life in Newberry County that is unseen within the Midlands area, and we need to do everything we can in order to protect that. And that's the reason that a lot of us are on county council, and that's the reason a lot of you are here tonight, and that does not go unrecognized. We tell ourselves up here quite a bit that we are here to support Newberry County and that agriculture is a major component of the quality of life in Newberry County, and trying to strengthen these ordinances to protect that quality of life and protect that industry is first and foremost within the county. We have to recognize that and do everything we can in order to protect that industry and the quality of life that we all enjoy in Newberry County. I could go on and on about that, but I'll stop. So anyway, thank y'all for coming out. We have a lot of work to do, and this is just a start, so stay tuned. One last thing before I quit. We, please keep all of our first responders in your prayers. We had a huge incident this week that a young man from out of town lost his life, and we pulled a lot of entities together in order to work that scene. And I have, I myself have been a first responder and be on the scene where an individual lost their life, and that is something that sticks with you for a lifetime. So please keep our first responders in Newberry County, which is, by the way, our fire service 100% volunteer. Those are individuals that volunteer their time and do not get paid to do it. So please keep those folks in your thoughts and your prayers, especially the family of that young man that lost his life. Please keep him in your prayers as well. Again, thank y'all for coming out, and that's all I have.
Councilman Reader?
I'm glad to see everybody out tonight. I know when we make decisions, it's not going to be good for everybody, but that's the way it is. We enjoy the fact that you come out and you have things to say. When you say things, then that gives us the opportunity for a light to start blinking. So if you never say anything, then we won't know. But I appreciate the fact that everybody coming out tonight. I also want to send prayers to the family of the police officer that was buried this week, Mike Hawkins. He was a very good guy to everybody, but they say God always take the good ones. So I also like to thank everybody that was awarded tonight for the years of service, and it's truly deserved. That's one of the bright spots when we come in, come in here twice a month to see those individuals who've been here, who've served the county, and done real good things, and are still here to be able to talk about it. I like to thank the administration for all the things that they do because it's not easy. It's never easy, and those decisions have to be made, and it's tough when you think about all the members, the people who pay taxes in this county, it's a tough decision, but they have to be made. So I appreciate everybody here tonight. Go home, I'm not sure what the condition is going to be outside this evening, but everybody, please stay safe.
Councilman Smith?
Thank you. I concur with Mr. Fulmer on the concerns we got with the ordinances with the county. I know we got a lot of work to do, and I feel like we would do the right decision on it. It means a lot to me. Also, I'd like to, my thoughts and prayers go out to the accident that we had this week in the county, also with the family, and with the city police department, with Lieutenant Mike Hawkins, very close to all of us, hit us all hard, especially with 35 years of public service. It affected us all. And I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, participating in local government, makes a big difference. Thank you, guys, for coming out. I'd like to thank for the longevity awards for all the employees. Couldn't do without you. Appreciate your help. Thanks, everybody.
Councilman Reverend Skerritt?
Just so glad to see all y'all out. And Miss Dawn, 50 years. Only the good survive. God bless her. And all the Metz and Pitts family, thank y'all coming out, hope you saw us much next time. Look forward to seeing y'all one more time out here. The bell's not rung, the talker must go the last mile away. I thank y'all coming out with us tonight. This is our county administrator, he's bawling the same bell we bawled. Thank all y'all coming tonight. Thank you so much.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and participating in our government process because we like to hear from everybody, because if we don't hear from you, we don't think there's any issues or we don't need to change ordinance, which tonight we just stopped and tabled that ordinance so we could go back and add some more stuff into that one, but also we realize we need to visit the zoning ordinance and make some changes over there to be able to control the future growth in the county and prevent things like happening in Lexington County stuff where it's out of control. So we're glad we're working on that. Glad we passed it. We had the chicken ordinance reading, we spent a lot of time working on that, and that was another thing we tabled. We got input from everybody in the county that came to the meetings and stuff, made some changes so everybody can live with it, and we came back and we got a thing that looks like it's going to work for us, so I was glad for that. Also, our county employees, can't say enough for our county employees that serve so long, especially Debbie over there. I'm telling you, when I came on board of county council board, she was right there helping me do all kinds of stuff, and I just appreciate it. And she still, if I need something, she's right there, and when Andrew's not around, and takes care of me. So I really appreciate Debbie, all your years of service to Newberry County. Also, you know, we had that tragic accident this week, and that, things like that happen, so hopefully that they do some investigation and learn from the mistakes, that they didn't have some safety procedures maybe in place to help prevent that cave-in type incident. In the future, we can prevent a death from occurring. So prayers to the family and all the first responders that went out there and helped. It looked like we had a lot of different agencies out there from the county working together like they always do to help protect the citizens of Newberry County, so I'm just proud of that. So, you know, we got some, other issue was that tough decision we had to make on that rezoning issue, and it came down to what our zoning ordinance says, that it should match the adjacent properties, and that we shouldn't spot zone, which that would have been a spot zone, and we had to look into the future, what would happen to that property if it got sold. Well, then they could do anything that R2 allowed, and that would affect everybody that lived around there, and they had some other options to do that. So that's why I changed my vote this week because just based on all the issues and everything, I had to weigh everything a long time because it was a tough decision. But I tried to think, well, they could still, there's nothing preventing them from building on R2, but we definitely don't want to change the RS back to R2. So that's why I made my decision. Sometimes you have to make those tough decisions. Thank you, everybody, for coming out, and I want to thank Jeff and the staff for doing a good job of putting these ordinance together and setting it straight and giving a good analogy and comparison on the land ordinance versus the zoning ordinance, that obviously we need to do some work on that, too, in the future. Thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Well, I think pretty much everything's been said. But I do appreciate everybody coming out tonight. We did have some tough things to go through, and it's nothing personal, I hope, between anybody. Council has to make tough decisions sometimes. We're going to agree sometimes, sometimes we're not, but that's what we're here for. We're here to listen to you. Newberry County is going to grow, we just got to make sure we grow Newberry County the way we want Newberry County to grow, not the way it wants to grow. It's inevitable. We're going to grow. Let's make sure we do it right and not the way people want it to be, developers want it to be. Let's Newberry County people do it the way we want it. So understand that there's going to be some things come up that everybody's not going to agree with, but it's for the good of all. We're not making decisions based upon what I feel and what he feels. For the best of Newberry County, not for the best of the big developers. Thank you, Jeff, staff, everybody, for everything you did and always do, putting this together. You do a great job, as always. Still can't believe I was four years old when you came to work. Just want to make sure I said that one more time. Rest, I'm going to need you to walk me out.
Debbie, I thought he said you were four years old when you started working here.
Andrew wasn't born yet.
Thank you all for coming out. Future meetings. Newberry County Executive Committee that was scheduled for February 24th has been canceled due to there not being any business to take care of. Newberry County Council Work Session, March 5th at 5:00 p.m. Newberry County Council Meeting, March 5th at 6:00 p.m. Newberry County Economic Development Committee, March 10th at 5:00 p.m. Newberry County Council Work Session, March 19th at 5:00 p.m. And Newberry County Council Meeting, March 19th at 6:00 p.m. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Reverend Skerritt? Second by Councilman Seaston. Any discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned.